Cause we need to order this is the City of Harvey council. Today is Monday, June 9th, 2025, it's 7:12 PM. All of the present uh house members, if you'd be so kind as to log in as present. We have a call. Next uh item. Our agenda is identification of lead and lead allegiance. I think more about his. Heavenly Father, mercy upon the gracious hour, we come to you saying thank you, oh Lord. Knowing that all things come through you, continuing to ask you for any blessings, your protection, your guidance, your mercy, and your grace. We thank you, oh Lord, for your much favor because were enough of that, we would not have been able to wake up this morning, Lord. If you weren't here for nothing, you sending your son, oh Lord, we would not have any of that grace or mercy extended to us, oh Lord, so that we can have each and everything. We ask, oh Lord, that you would allow us to look inside our souls and to find our find your spirit so that we may be guided in your will and your way, so that we may be protected, oh Lord, from those things that may come that try to block our paths from getting closer to you. We know that you are the most important and you are the most high and the the most omniscient and omnipresent God. We know that all things flow through you and we would like to only be a vessel, oh Lord. So we ask that you bless this council, that you bless this city, that you bring your spirit on it and you let it rain down and pour on every citizen, oh Lord, and every person that comes within our jurisdiction. We thank you again, oh Lord, and we thank you for continuing to bless us and we will continue to hold you up high because you are the magnificent, you are the one and only God and we need nothing else. This we ask in Jesus' name, amen. Well, thank you. All right, next one, our agenda number four is um. Yeah, is um. A presentation uh from Emily Dugan from the Get the Lead Out Initiative, is she present? Hi, hi, give us step over here, please. I think there's a microphone that you may have to follow.
Ms. Smith? Perfect. Hi, everyone, thank you so much for inviting us here tonight. Thank you especially to Ms. Crystal Richardson, who we've been working with on this project and getting our efforts to identify lead service lines in Harvey started. Uh my name is Emily Dugan, I am a contractor at General Dynamics Information Technology and I'm here with my colleague today, Ms. Pope, who is a senior advisor on this project. Go ahead and go to the next slide. So the Get the Lead Out Initiative, this is an environmental protection agency program that helps cities around the country identify where lead is and accelerate its removal. This is an entirely free program that Harvey opted into in collaboration with General Dynamics to find where lead is, apply for funding to replace it, and again, create a plan on how we're going to actually remove it. So, next slide. The commitment of the Glow Initiative is to implement proactive measures to ensure clean, clean, safe drinking water in Harvey. Lead can cause significant health issues, specifically to younger and older folks, and so the best way to prevent that is to remove it at its source. We support the identification and the planning of the replacement of this through four central things seen up here. Uh first, there's the historical records review, Harvey's gone through much of this already to develop the initial inventory. Then we'll be doing visual inspection, that's mostly what I'm going to be talking tonight is how we're going to do this visual inspection. Uh there's community engagement planning, that's going to involve everyone in this room to help identify where that is, talk about how we're going to keep your water safe, and then finally, funding and replacement planning. We're currently in the process of doing a replacement plan for Harvey, it's a long process and I know that Harvey too has already worked with an engineer on applying for funding to remove lead service lines. Next one. Visual inspection, that's where we're at right now, we really need to know where the lead is because you can't replace something if you don't know where it is, of course. Uh we're doing that through a few different ways. The first, we want to make sure that we're not just disrupting your water, digging a big hole, so the first thing that we're trying to do is have visual inspections through an online survey that you can take and we have a sign here, you might have seen some of these signs around, thank you Water Department for putting those up, I was so excited to see that. Uh there's a little QR code here and you can scan that to take the survey online, it takes three minutes, there's instructions, if you find your water meter, take a photo, submit that, it really, really helps the city. You can also find this uh this survey on the Water Department website too, if you're not, some of the likes of scanning QR codes, I know there are those of us who are like that. The other thing that we are planning to is to actually have a team out in the field to be going and knocking on homes that we know we are not sure what the material is. So in July, you might see some, some of us out there, we'll have these yellow vests, clipboard, and we'll be asking if we can come into your home and look at your basement at what that service line material is. If you don't want someone in your home, maybe you don't want to clean up your basement, you have some Christmas decorations all around, you don't want to move the boxes, go ahead and fill out that survey and we won't be bothering you, so. Definitely encourage you people take to take the survey, but you might see us in July. The next thing that we would move on to is exploratory digging, that's what we call, it's a, our general term for anything called pot-holing, that's where we'll dig a hole in the ground so that we can see the line and identify what that material type is. Harvey, we has done a great job with their inventory already and we're looking at some ways that we can actually, you know, use that pot-holing process to be used for some scientific research as well too, so we're really excited about that. But before that happens, you're going to be getting notices, you'll know if your home is going to be one of those that that might have a pothole in front of it, so it's not the kind of pothole that you drive over and it hurts your car, I promise, and we will be doing restoration afterwards as well too, so you won't have a hole in your garden. All of this, we uh with all of this data, we put this into the inventory, we make a plan for how we're going to replace all of these lead lines and then we go out and apply for the funding for that. And the next slide. Okay, and this is again two, this is the self-identification survey, again, we'll leave this uh this here for you too, so if you want to come scan that, you can also go again to the City of Harvey's website to find that survey. Next one. Uh we're developing a lot of different flyers for people to use, so you'll be seeing some of these out, we're planning to send out a school flyer as well too, so make it an educational activity for students to get them involved in identifying where the lead is. So you might be seeing these at your church, your school, in your mailbox, just wanted to prime you for that. Next slide. Again, as I said, community engagement is a huge part of this, so we are going to be engaging you through every step of the process, we're not just going to, we're not trying to just show up at your home without any type of warning, asking to get into your basement, we want you to know that we're coming, so we'll have some signs out, some social media material that will be telling you when we're coming. So that's kind of our logo design, just trying to get you all prepared for that and then we'll go to the next slide. We're also going to be showing up at some events in Harvey too, so we'll have this table, this is for a community in Ohio, Harvey has their own uh tablecloth too that we're designing right now, we have fun little games, activities, resources about lead, how you can reduce your risk for lead, how to self-identify, so you'll be seeing us out this summer. Next slide. This is my favorite part of our community engagement, we really like to distract the kids, get them over there, we have buttons, lots of coloring books and things, so just so you know, we will be trying to encourage your children to come over and talk to us so we can talk to the parents, so just be aware of that. And next slide. And again, more, more examples of our community engagement thing, so if you see us out this summer at a community event, come say hi and chat with us. Next slide. So what happens if we do find lead? In the Chicagoland area, there is obviously a lot of lead, we're expecting that there will, we will find more as we go through this process, but what we're going to do is we're going to be working hard with you to make sure, one, that you're safe, we're going to be giving information on filters, on how to run your tap water to avoid the risk of ingesting more lead, we're going to support the community and identifying and applying for more grants so that it can speed up the timeline for how this lead is being removed from the water system, and we'll help work with the community to create plans just to keep you and your family safe. Next slide. And finally, this is my, my pitch for everyone, Harvey's participation in Glow requires action, I want to speak as well to the older men and women too, we encourage you to speak with your wards, your constituents about the survey and about door knocking, letting them know, you know, take this survey so that we can find this, so that we can speed up the timeline for replacing lead pipe service lines in Harvey, and letting them be aware that we're going to be out in the community to doing some door knocking in July. So connected with this, everyone here too, if you have a family member who hasn't taken the survey yet, go home and let them know to take that so we can get their information in there and be sure to visit the water, the water, the city's water page so that we can, they can get more information. Yeah, every record we review, every visual inspection that we do in the community gives us one step closer, so just thank you all for your participation and again, thank you for allowing Ms. C and I to come and speak with you tonight. And then the last slide, I think, is just the survey again, so really, really pushing the survey, thank you. If there are any questions, I'm happy to take them. Yes.
Next one.
Uh thank you, thank you for your presentation, I'd like to, I'd like to know of a timeline and will you be working in conjunction with the Harvard Water Department as you're visiting residents' homes, especially seniors?
Yes, yes, uh we're actually, Crystal and I have been talking with other community organizations as well and with uh with organizations that are working with Harvey seniors so that we're again, we're not surprising them, there's another, there's a person that they know coming to the door with us so that they know, okay, this is trusted, this is okay by the city, we're working very closely with the Water Department and.
Now, how will we determine whether or not that these, at these houses, some of the uh more older houses actually have hair, I mean, do you have to go in the house to to make that determination?
Yeah, so the, the city did a great job with the inventory, the initial inventory, they did a records review of this and they're presuming that based on the house date that it would be lead, we're going to be doing some of those, we're going to be sampling some of those, not all of them, uh we're still working on the exact plan for that, but we do still have quite a few that we're not sure what the material is, so we need to go and actually go into those homes to inspect that.
And in your humble opinion, about what, what kind of timeline are we looking at as far as this process from beginning to end?
Their, their participation in Glow, that's only for the, the year, but for the replacement of all of the lead service lines currently as it stands, we're looking at, that's 2037 is when that needs to be completed. Uh I don't want you to quote me on that, there's still some, you know, changes in the lead and copper roll going on that need to be approved, but that's about the timeline we're looking at.
Thank you. Next one.
My question is, if I notice some of the uh posters are written in Spanish, do you even have all your literature included, your flyers in Spanish and your programs in Spanish?
Definitely have that, if you would like us to translate this presentation, that is something that we could do as well, so that could be given to you in Spanish, I think you can prepare with that tonight, it's a great idea, yeah.
Okay, great, thank you, I would appreciate it, thank you.
Any questions? Hearing none, thank you, thank you very much.
Alright, thanks.
Yep. Alright, next uh. Adder for business is approval of ordinances and resolutions for the City of Harvey. Five O Business, um nine five B New Business, B one, a motion to approve the release and settlement agreement between A.D. Winters and City of Harvey, this motion authorizes a breed upon settlement for A.D. Winters, B, City of Harvey for case number twenty dash C.B. dash two two four eight. A motion out of the sixth and the second by the third, is there any debate? Hearing none, give me catch your votes. Motion ended. Here it is. There is no resolution for number for that. Number two, it is a resolution authorizing the award and execution of an independent contractor agreement for construction services between the City of Harvey and County Metro City Plumbing. This resolution authorizes the removal of existing water meters located either in the valve box or valve vault in city right of way or residents' homes and replacement with smart water meters in accordance with bid number two zero two five dash zero three dash zero one for a total contract amount of three hundred twenty-two thousand eight hundred sixty-five dollars and zero cents. I have a motion by the third and the second by the first. Is there any debate? Is there? Uh well, that's not a point. The question is, is there any debate in that? Hearing none, um give me catch your votes. Motion here is.
And that's resolution four zero zero seven, four zero zero seven.
Thank you, next uh on the agenda. All the automatic reports. Chair recognizes second ward.
Good evening, Mayor Clark, fellow alderpersons, administration, and residents of the great City of Harvey, first I would wish a happy early Father's Day to all the fathers, grandfathers, mentors, and father figures in our community. Your strength, protection, and guidance do not go unnoticed. Proverbs 27 says, "The righteous man walks in his integrity; his children are blessed after him." Our city needs men who lead with integrity, love, and courage, especially in these trying times. As we celebrate our families, we must also acknowledge the financial challenges many residents are facing, particularly those raising children home for the summer. Since January of 2025, the city has approved several fee changes that affect everyday living. The municipal gas use tax was restructured, potentially increasing costs for heating and cooking gas. Credit card processing fees were added for paying water bills, permits, and city services while online or by car. Ordinance thirty-five oh one was adopted which allows automatic annual increases to city fees and fines based on inflation according to the Consumer Price Index. A sixty-dollar transfer stamp fee was added for all property sales effective April 7th with a three percent convenience fee for digital transactions. These are just to name a few. Each of these adjustments was presented as a way that improves city revenue and services, but the cumulative impact is significant, especially for working families and seniors on fixed incomes. That's why I strongly encourage residents to attend committee meetings led by your alderpersons. These meetings give you a chance to understand proposals early, raise concerns, and help shape decisions before they're finalized. We need transparency and equity in every step we take. Adding urgency to our situation, state comptroller Susanna Mendosa continues to classify Harvey as being in critical financial condition citing serious debt and class, pardon, cash flow issues. This isn't just a financial concern, it's a call to act responsibly and collaboratively. And while we discuss finances, we must not lose sight of the lies behind the numbers. A letter here from Willow, shocking in Harvey, and the one whose foot was mauled by a dog. These tragedies underscore the urgent need for stronger public safety, accountability, and compassion in city response. To everyone in the second ward and across the south of it, thank you, gracias, chico. Your support, advocacy, and presence make a difference, let's continue to rise together. And we'll be having a second ward meeting this Wednesday, six PM to eight PM, 15446 five Lexington, at Transformation Community United Methodist Church, thank you.
Next, we have third ward.
Good evening, everyone. Good to see you, wonderful, nice, really is, I love to see the room is filled. When we're doing our alderminister's to conduct business, we all get a packet, we used to get it like on a Friday, we get it a whole week ahead, that's the time we are supposed to read our packet, call to get answers to our questions we may have about, when we come to meetings, we're to say, yeah, yeah, so what we agree on, and if you don't agree with anything, just say no. These are meetings are not for the grandstanding and all of the things that happens in these meetings, or for us to even be butchered up in here, we're doing our best with what we have. We always talk about financial responsibility, and I know everybody is tired of us talking about what the last administration did, however, a hundred sixty-five million dollars is a lot to you all, in one term, two terms, but like I always say, with all the monies that the businesses owe us, I wish all of you would take this time out that you come in here for this, to go to those stores and shame them into giving us our money. See, that would be the first step to a movement to improve our community, give us our money. We have a funeral home here, which we all know, funeral home, everybody gonna pay to bury their loved ones, anytime you don't have a funeral home paying you what they're supposed to pay you, but we can sit in here and grandstand about something that's not even as important as getting our money to help us get what we need, so I implore you all again, let's stick together to show us the money, thank you, have a good night.
Excuse me, um what are they supposed to pay?
They taxed it, they property taxed it, the taxes they haven't paid us in over ten years, over ten years, so everybody asked like, yeah, I, I, I tried to ten, but they probably can't, you know, I understand sometimes I do, it's taking so much, a little bit at a time, because I don't think they understand who has taken our money, who has our money, who won't give us our money. They brought us to six streets, we've been running the city with no money, we've been running the city with no money. Everything you've gotten has been done here and through great money, and everybody is saying, why do we fix this street and not this street? You can't take, you can't take this money from here and put over there, we all know that. And then, like I said, not only you people here, so you people that's sorrows, you know, because I always thought, oh, you're supposed to be trying to work together and improve your community, it's summertime, we got a lot going on in the summertime, we can at least come together and try to help our kids, at least keep our kids, keep our kids safe.
Thank you. Alright, everybody. Can we please come over so we can move on? It's greatly appreciated. Next uh, now there is the sixth ward.
Uh thank you, Mayor.
You're speaking to your microphone and sir, so they can hear you.
Good afternoon, everybody, uh I said, this is the vice lord, I'd like to begin by expressing my sincere gratitude to each one of you for coming out to today's meeting. Your continued involvement and concern for our community is what helps the sixth ward strong and move forward. I'd like to take a moment to commend the street and sanitation department for a great job that they've done, uh cleaning and cutting overgrown locks throughout the ward. With this, with this recent stretch of heavy rain, the job hasn't been easy, but they've shown uh great commitment and diligence, and as we enter the summer season, I also would like to remind everyone that school-aged children are out of school, and please use extra caution while driving through our neighborhoods and our community. Kids are out playing, riding bikes, enjoying their break, let's do all, do all our part to keep them safe. Additionally, I would like to inform you that we have completed our annual spring break across the ward, and if you have any remaining bulk items or debris that needs to be picked up, do not place them in the street or in the alley as they will not be collected, instead, please contact me and I will work and contact directly with the street department to provide a dumpster or appropriate solution. Once again, thank you for your continued cooperation and partnership, if you need to reach me for any reason, my contact information is area code seven eight five one six two two seven six, and I am here to serve you. And thank you, and let's keep working together for a better sixth ward. And I also like to wish every man, uh without the sound of my voice, that's here in the City of Harvey, and as well as the sixth ward, a glorious Father's Day. You know, we put a lot of emphasis on Mother's Day, which they do deserve it, but it couldn't be a mother without a father, so with that being said, I'd like to wish everybody a glorious Father's Day, thank you.
Thank you, next uh we have fourth ward.
Thank you, Mayor, my mic is working, you know, right to say, I want to thank you everybody for coming out, I would like to first pay you back on the other responses of saying, um, the most underrated holiday of the year, Father's Day. And the reason I can say it, uh I'm a single parent, I raised my daughter and my son, and I know I've been a father, and I couldn't have been a father, my father had the best excuse in the world, he passed when I was two years old, that's the only excuse I can ever accept for a father. Nevertheless, I had a strong mother to raise me, even though she didn't approve of me being in politics at all, she told me to watch myself and to be careful, she still raised me to the point where I can be somebody and make a difference in somebody's life, so there's a lot of good fathers out there, we may not get the credit that we deserve, but if you are a father, you don't look for that, you're a survivor, you raise, you take care of the home, you don't look for anything, only for the kids to grow up and get out on their own. Um update for the grass, um in the fourth ward, you know, the grass is always the hardest time of the year, um or in the beginning of the year, because it rains so much and the grass grows up and everything, but they are in the fourth ward, they are out there cutting and they are doing a good job, and I just want to commend them for that and let them know that, I just want to also, um, I want to wish a happy birthday, a happy five-year-old birthday to Mr. Garber right there, if you can raise your hand, sir? Okay, I just wanted to just say that and I just wanted to just commend him, when I said five years old, because when you look at living life, you know, twenty years, um they said three scores in a ten, that's seven years old, so if you're seventy-five years old, you know, you really, you know, really didn't complete a real good accomplishment, so I just want to just acknowledge that, I quickly want to acknowledge Mr. and Mrs. Harris, I can't stop, stop talking about them, Mr. Harris is a hundred years old, Ms. Harris is ninety-five years old, they were in Philadelphia, I made a signing convention, the fire alarm went on off, they had to make it down fifteen flights of stairs and they made it down them stairs and they made it down them safely, and they are still here, so amen for that. Got to mention them, and at the end, just teamwork, we all find a way to get it together for the sake of our residents, because that's who we work for, thank you. Thank you.
Next uh, and finally, we have the first ward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, good evening, everyone, and once again, happy Father's Day to all the fathers out there and all the role models. You know, I, I just want to say, I am the longest-serving elected official on this board, and with that being said, I have to recap my first eight years. Many of you know that I myself was threatened, harassed, even to the point that my employer was sent flyers along with my colleagues. along with my colleagues about unfavorable characteristics of me. I was contacted by the federal government, Cook County, and many of those media forces, um, seeking a story. And I had a story to share, and I could share it. Not only did I, but all the aldermen, I believe, were contacted by these three outlets during my first eight years as an elected official under a previous administration. Now, my last six years under this administration, under Mayor Clark, never once did the federal government or Cook County ever contact me about any story. And I will say, for the record, only one media outlet reached out to me in those six years, seeking a story, but I didn't have a story to share. And trust me, if there was a story, I would be the first one to share it. I took an oath to uphold the laws and duties of an alderperson, to support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Illinois, and thankfully discharged these duties to the best of my ability. And I take that seriously. It's not subjective. It's not whether I choose to follow a law or a duty of an alderperson. I took an oath that I would, in the State of Illinois and the U.S. Constitution. Therefore, I ask each and every one of you, before you hear a story, because you will hear them, check the facts. Boy, a print of an information act, you go to the clerk's office. And nothing else. I have nothing to hide or nothing to mislead anyone. Please give me a call, and my phone number is seven oh eight, five nine six, seventy-four seventy. Thank you.
But then the microphone, you sort of, it makes you...
Oh, I'm sorry. My phone number is seven oh eight, five nine six, seventy-four seventy. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have public comment. Public comment is encouraged and appreciated. This is the only opportunity for the public to address the city council on agenda items and any other city-related business in order to accomplish all business on the agenda and be respectful of everyone's time. Council members will not engage in dialogue with individual members of the audience, and no immediate action will be taken on any public comment issue. So it's limited, uh, your comments to three minutes. No speaker may donate his own time. Comments shall be courteous and respectful at all times. No person may use public comment for the purpose of campaign or advertisement. This is not a question and answer time. The council cannot engage in conversation with the public. Questions and concerns about operations should be addressed by city staff doing regular business hours. So first, we have up, uh, for public comment is Chappelle Hooks, followed by, looks like Kathy King Waters.
Hello, Harvey. My name is Chappelle Hooks. I am a newly-elected, um, Harvey Public Library trustee in 2023. Thank you for all those who vote for me. I'm not part of the defined, uh, but the jazz that's been taking today. Alden Smith, none of the businesses that pay you, because that has nothing to do with you. Um, then, and a sorority has nothing to do with what's going on in Harvey. Um, you talk about those taxes. That's not the real business. That's the countless business. Um, we have no businesses. And about your last, um, administration prior, you four decided for us not to have a grocery store. You all decided for us not to have streets done. You all decided for us not to have lights. All of that. Y'all hear that. You four, yes, y'all hear. Y'all four hear that. Y'all missed eighteen minutes. You say, he said that y'all was protesting. Where? Because y'all wasn't outside. Y'all went up in here. Even if y'all was outside, y'all wouldn't have heard them. So you wasn't holding up your fiduciary dealings to the people. The man came and was going to give us the grocery store. He was going to pay the back taxes and everything. Y'all said no. We were going to get a Ricky Rockets. Y'all said no. Everything. Y'all said no to it. Now, look, like I said before, the, the, the hole or the ditch that you dug, hell, you should have dug it for yourself, because y'all man right in and out, because we ain't got a jacket, nothing. Y'all build a fifty-one unit building for what? Can't feed the people. You can't even give the people medication. They don't have no pharmacy, no nothing here. So, so what y'all, what did y'all accomplish last administration? Nothing. And then you talk about the, the one million, what, one, one sixty-nine? And, um, what, what, what they got to do now? We, six years now, six years, no treasure report. But y'all steady paying out all these lawsuits. You getting all this other stuff. You got these big screens and all that. Everybody driving car and all this and that. But what you talking about for that from last administration? Make it make sense. Show, show that money. That's all we want to see.
Thank you. Next is Kathy King Waters, followed by Ms. Ervin.
Good afternoon, good evening, actually. Uh, I'm with Reflexive Park, which is a LGBTQ education support and advocacy group. On April twenty-eighth, a Harvey resident was accused of being a pedophile and is a gay man. If those accusations were true in his job, the school where he was, as a mandatory reporter, would have had to report him. He would have been charged and prosecuted if those charges were true. And it's irresponsible to perpetuate that kind of stereotype that has existed for beings about gay men. In February of twenty twenty-five, Gallup polled released, uh, some stats. Nine point three of the U.S. pop, percent of the U.S. population identifies as LGBTQ. Nine point three percent of Harvey is a big top of Harvey. Twenty-three percent of Generation Z are up and comers, identifies as LGBTQ. When they see their leadership denigrating LGBTQ people, they're not going to want to stay here. They're not going to want to stay here after graduation. They're not going to want our houses. They're not going to want to open businesses. Without our young people, remember Whitney Houston says, children are our future. Our cities and Southland are going to fail. They're going to fail. We need to make all people feel welcome in all of the South suburbs, because we know in the South suburbs, there's not a lot of support for LGBTQ people. And I see a very diverse group in this room, and a very diverse group leading Harvey. Y'all know what stereotypes do. Y'all know the effects that stereotypes have, and nobody should be perpetuating them in this stadium. We need to come together, and we need to be the examples for our young people. So I hope that this august group will not fall for stereotypes, will not perpetuate stereotypes, and will not perpetuate rumors. And I thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you. Next is Ms. Ervin, followed by Cynthia Wilson.
Uh, hello, everybody. My name is Ms. Ervin, former trustee of the Harvey Public Library. And, um, wow, I'm disappointed. I just, the waste, the waste. I am sick and tired of you all arresting Kobe Chapman over your violation of Robert's Rule of Order. I've never seen so many violations in all the days of my life. You're just changing to your, our clerk's rules of order. This is crazy. We don't know what's going on. We don't know what you're doing. All the lawsuits, all these people we paying out. Eddie Winters, police chief. He started community policing, came in here, tried to rally around the community. You got rid of, now we paying him out. Who is advising you on to do, to do these things? It's not about winning. It's about what's right and what's wrong. And once you put that into your vocabulary about, about what's right and what's wrong, then we're going to really change things in the City of Harvey. I'm not up here to win. I'm up here to get what's right for my city. And I think that's what everybody else is here for too. We ain't at no dog race, okay? We ain't at no horse race. So you need to change the way that you look at things. Person, all this personal stuff that's going on, you need to get rid of that. Because if she asks a question, there's a good reason why she's asking it. And I don't want to hear nothing about, you got this many days to take care of this before that, that. Apparently, you all ain't answered her. If she's emailing you or calling you, you on the law firm, and where are they at tonight? Where are they at tonight? You on your own. You by yourself this time. I want to see this shot. Grandstanding, Ms. Smith, you're the worst one of all. You are the worst of them all. What, what is going on up in here? Shirley, you said somebody was contacting you and were questioning yourself? You, you're just as bad, okay? You voted to have her removed. This woman had surgery, and these policemen up in here tossing around here like she a rag doll. You don't know what pain she's feeling in her body. She ain't assaulting nobody. Y'all assaulted her. You four and him. It's got to get better than what it is. It's got to. The treasurer's report? We can't get a report? What, what's going on? And at least tell us how much money that we have. It don't have to be down to the nickel penny. You can do better than what you're doing. This is not the way that you run a city. Okay, I expect, because you're the oldest and been here the longest, you know better than everybody else. But to please him, to get that little twenty-five thousand dollars for the year to pay for your expenses, to shut your head. You know I know what I'm talking about. I'm not you in town. And one time, me and you were linked up together, but not no more, not no more. The truth will set you free, okay? And that's all that I want. Always remember that, okay? Get off Kobe Chapman and him on with you, all right?
Next, we have, next, we have Cynthia Wilson, followed by, uh, M. King Jr.
Hey, I'm Cynthia Wilson. My issue is not with Christopher Clark today. My issue is not with the chief's office today. We're supposed to be speaking on the eighteenth. My issue is with my alderman. That's what my issue is. I called you on the phone and told you what was going on before I even talked to the chief, before I even talked to the mayor's office. I told you what was going on. You asked me, so, um, what you want me to do? You don't, you don't come to my meeting, so what you want me to do? So I have to do something for you for you to do something for me? Then I asked you about the shooting that happened behind my house. You said I ain't the police. What you want me to do? And then you said you want to talk about Ms. Kobe, Ms. Kobe. Don't tell me about this lady. I don't know what this lady got going on. I've never met this lady for two times in my life. And the second time I met this lady, she was picking up trash. Ten times, ten times, you done picked up trash around your city. You think they're set down for real? It's, it's, it's not given. It's not. You think you bigger than the program, baby, when you just a puppet on a string.
Next, we have, uh, where's, oh, there it is, M. King Jr., followed by Ervin, it's like, it's Ervin.
Words in my mouth and meditation in my heart makes something I say, oh, my strength and my redeeming. Lord, bring peace, love, and take away the hate and all the spiritual things that are happening in here. Lord, guide us through a better way, Lord, and take all this get-back arrest and all this stuff out of the City of Harvey. Lord, you said we cannot pray that we're evil. Our prayers are not answered when we do things after we pray. In the name of Jesus, I pray amen.
Role and responsibility of a municipal treasurer. A treasurer in Illinois holds a significant position within the local government, managing the financial affairs of the municipalities. The responsibility are defined by the Illinois Municipal Code, which includes overseeing the collection, safeguarding, and disbursement of municipal funds. Treasurers ensure compliance with state laws such as the Local Government Debt Reform Act and maintain accurate financial reports, records of transparency and accountability. Treasurers are also report responsible for investment management under the Public Fund Investment Act, prioritizing safety, liquidity, and yield. They navigate property tax, working with the county officials to ensure timely and accurate tax billing. Their role requires a deep understanding of the property tax code and an implication for local revenue. In budget preparation, financial forecasting, treasurers collaborate with municipal offices to develop physical sound budgets. I said, and read this again, in budget preparation and physical forecasting, treasurers collaborate with municipal officials to develop physical sound budgets. It involves analyzing revenue streams and identifying financial challenges, while staying informed about the changes in state and federal fundings and legislative development. I tell you, this city is backward. What's problem is here? The treasurer can't make a progress or do anything, because if the treasurer was able to do something, they would know what the reports are. They know the money coming in, the money going out. Right now, we have, as, as, uh, the brother, Ms. Ervin said, twenty-five thousand dollars allocated for each ward. And what does that mean? Twenty-five dollars for each ward? The question I want to ask you, as I said the last time, tell me what each alderperson is getting for this. Is each alderperson fairly getting the money? And I say this again, the treasurer, my suggestion, should be holding an American Express. Well, that alderperson gets the money, is seen, is a report made, and is a document sent to the city hall and everybody else. But the bottom line is, we have a treasurer that's being mistreated. And we've been mistreated because our financial understanding of what's happening in Harvey and the monies that being spent, and for whatever it is, we don't know what it is. And we still don't know what it is. Here's a police chief, and I loved him. I loved Mr. Winters. He set all kinds of programs up for us, citizen policing and all that. We had block captures and all that, that, that. The bottom line that I see, show me the money, and I won't say anything bad about you. But I'm not shaming anybody, like, some alderpersons that's going to give a report, they're giving a shame. Let's be right.
Next is Vernon Turner, followed by, I'm not sure, but Amir is the last name.
Good evening. My name is Vernon Turner. Mayor Clark and your staff and department heads. I'd like to speak on, um, well, you know, normally, you're having a week, a weekend for the July fourth. It's on the fifty-fifth. The City of Harvey does a good job cleaning up, but I think you need to put the signs out sooner, because people might be on vacation at time. They might not be able to move their car unless they talk to their neighbors or something. And it'd be easier to have them know in advance. Also, uh, we should have, uh, when the staff report, every once in a month, maybe break it up in half, and not all of them can be on the same first. And then they should have some to say, last time, they were like, no report. There's got to be something going on in every department, but some, maybe it's two sentences. At least let us know that they're doing something that's for the city. And the minutes, they always say, no old business, but nothing reported what was there. Because I'm not coming every, I don't come every meeting, but the people that come, really, the seniors of Harvey, the most of us come, and they should be able to see what was discussed. Not, they got a right word for word, but some highlights of what was discussed. Where they like to repeat something that they weren't aware of. So it'd be better if they, and we need to be able to, uh, diversity, communities going to be diverse, with the Mexicans and Africans. We have to bring them into the chambers, because they trying to get political school issues and stuff like that. So we need to be, make some type of message to get out to them, where they can be participating in the City of Harvey moving forward. And also, I'd like to speak on public work. They do a great job, too. I mean, I think the staff is more, much more than we had before. Because I see twenty and thirty guys out there cleaning these lots, empty stuff, and they really do a hard job. And I don't know why, how they, uh, they got a lot of tasks, because I see a lot of highways and everything all over Harvey. And I've been here since sixty-nine, that's eight years old, and I seen the good times and the bad times. But also, um, the, uh, when you staff get reports, they need to get something. And, um, one more thing, and, oh, when we, uh, need to get, maybe you have, I have a suggestion, where we can get the young kids... maybe you have, I have a suggestion where we can get young kids, like we could have a program where we have a scholarship for high school, couple of high schools, and all the eighth grades going to high school. And you could do that fund by at a meeting and save five dollars and give a raffle for fifteen dollars to whoever's coming, spend five dollars and have a chance to get a raffle ticket. And that'd be, if that money could go to the scholarship fund. And with my last time, well, fifteen seconds, give it to the next person.
All right, we have, thank you, Amir, followed by Robinson Ruski.
Good afternoon. I guess I'm gonna start by saying my name is Amir A. Chakor Clear. I'm the president of Freedom First International. And we would like to make a statement. And I'm gonna start by asking a question. What does Christopher Clark have to fear with accountability to the community? That is the question of the hour. Mr. Clark, is it sweetheart deals that are providing for your lifestyle? Good question. Have you doubted in the financials of the city's accounting? What do you have to fear, Mr. Clark? When leadership stands outside of public interest, it is not leadership. We call it being a tyrant. Drangical movements have things to hide. So I ask you the question again. What do you have to fear, Mr. Clark? The last time I came here, I addressed you, and I asked you very specific questions, and you still haven't changed your course of action. You should be ashamed of yourself as a black man who politically indicts a black female. That is not leadership. That is not being a man. So I will no longer address you. What I would do is talk to the police officers in this room and say that the day that you become a political arm of the mayor's office, is the day that you've gone wrong and you have fallen off of your low, low, lowe, lowe of office. We ask that you change your course because you can also stand at home and be held accountable for your actions. We want the public to send a very loud and clear message at this point that the Harvey police are a political arm of the mayor's office. Let the public know is that if, once you stand in front of a police officer in Harvey, expect the worst every time. What I'm interested in at this point is any officer who has acted outside of public interest, please send us an email, freedomfirstinternational@gmail.com. I'm gonna say that again, freedomfirstinternational.com or you can look us up. We're interested in indicting these officers. We're interested in working with the accountability boards and the state authorities to have these folks indicted. And if you don't believe me, then check my record because I stood up against governors. I stood up against former police officers. Take it to heart. The last thing that I wanna say, Mr. Clark, is I hope you never forget the day when you bastardized your office.
Thank you. Uh, all right, then we have Robinson Ruski.
Okay, good evening, everyone. So first of all, I'm wondering, I'm wondering why the mayor was such a coward as to schedule a media interview at the same time as a press conference that we scheduled at six P.M. I wonder if it has something to do with the fact that I was discussing about his disgusting, perverted, incorrect, illegal allegations that were being on April twenty-eighth. Actually, the devicist saying that my other woman was arrested. He said that I had inappropriate sexual something or other with my students when I taught at Borden, which is, like I said, disgusting. It's not right. Um, he said that to, because he wanted to teach us a lesson, quote-unquote, about allegations because we have no proof of things that he's done. Well, actually, we do. We still don't have any receipts. You can see all the people you arrested for no reason. We can clearly see you're extorting businesses in churches. You give people fines all the time for retaliation. How can you be a city mayor and make such horrible allegations, you know? You know, what's really sad is, what actually happened at Borden is that I was being bullied mercilessly for being a gay teacher. And administration didn't respond. So another thing I said is, hmm, well, all that, that's confidential. Now, I shared some of that information, but there's plenty I didn't share with Mr. Clark. How did Mr. Clark gain access to that confidential information about a District Two-O-Five employee and about minors in District Two-O-Five? Does it maybe have something to do with someone that he knows very well in District Two-O-Five that I will not name? You can do your research. Then Tyrone Teleni. First of all, why are you laughing? You have been accused of sexually violently going after women so many times, and it is not rumors, sir. Don't you dare laugh at me again. And you can't even look at me because you know it's true. And Teleni Smith, you work for the Illinois Department of Children and Family Services, and you throw out allegations, false allegations, and lies, sexually, whatever, child. Teleni Smith, look at me in the face. You don't even have the guts, do you? Well, somebody gotta report her because, you know, I think, don't you think her boss should know that? I think that's pretty serious, especially since she's a mandated reporter. Finally, shame on all of you. It's Pride Month. I'll stand up for the LGBT black youth. I just went to a fashion show at Thorin High School, and they were there and they did a great job. Did you know the rate of suicide and homelessness are sky high amongst the black community? In the LGBT community? We are here. We live with you. We're your neighbors, we're your family. You cannot ignore us. These youth look to you, and you have failed them. Shame on you.
Next, we have departmental reports. Um, we've got Scott off, the city administrator, and follow our reports going down.
Good evening. My name is Jean-Loel Ellis, and I'm the deputy city administrator. The absence of the city administrator, I read her report, which speaks to full transparency about the state of our city and the work that's being conducted. To be completely honest with you, our city has never truly been removed from crisis mode. Since 2019, every step forward has been a part of an effort to not just remove, but to rebuild a government that was fundamentally broken. Let me remind you that at the very start of this administration, the city hall was raided by the FBI. Documents, computers, and other material were seized. These were the items Clark's administration could not account for. Beyond that, there was no real filing system in place. Nothing was organized, nor was there any structure. Therefore, the past six years, day-to-day operations have been focused on putting out fires as they come, literally and figuratively. That's not how a city should run. But that's the reality that was inherited. I realize how difficult it may be to believe that a city could function without basic policies, procedures, and oversight, but unfortunately, that was our reality. Now, fast forward, we are committed to zeroing in on each department to identify areas that need improvement. As we uncover issues, we implement solutions that are sustainable and effective. By streamlining operations, the services are easy to access, consistent, and efficient, both for our residents and our staff. Today, I'm pleased to announce that we are finalizing the audit for 2022. Plus, it's complete the full report we made available on our city's website for public review. Immediately after, we will begin with audit 2023. However, let me be clear. Do not expect that 2022 audit will be perfect as it will reflect decisions and operations from 2021 at a time when many of our systems and processes we have now were not put in place. The benchmark is set for 2024 audit, which will be the first audit that gives us a real and accurate picture of how our current policies and procedures work. Additionally, in the first quarter of this year, we applied for as many grants as we could. The work continues. Our priority is to bring and external resources to support needed improvements to our infrastructure. Here are a few key updates. Streetlights. The assessment of streetlights along 147th Street is currently underway. We anticipate going out to bid within the next couple of months. Fire hydrant replacement. We received only one bid for this project, which requires us to go back to bid. Water meter replacement. We accepted a hand contract, and we're now able to move forward with this project. This is a major step in modernizing our utility services. Other major projects, such as renovations along Broadway Avenue at 150th Street and 155th Street, are currently in the design phase. These projects will take time, and we don't expect to see shovels in the ground until 2026. But rest assured, the work is moving forward, and regular updates will be provided as we progress. Our mission is to rebuild this city with integrity, transparency, and a clear vision for the future. It is a long road, but we are making steady, meaningful progress. Thank you for your continued support and trust. This concludes my report.
Mayor, council members, and residents of the city of Harvey. I here today to provide you with the comprehensive update on recent crime statistics and the cases handled by the Harvey Police Department during the month of two thousand, May of 2025. This report will also encompass the department's overall activities for the month. In May 2025, the Harvey Police Department, excuse me, responded to a total of 2,955 calls for service. Their efforts resulted in fifty misdemeanor arrests, twelve felony arrests, one hundred and twenty-three moving and equipment violations, eighty vehicles that were towed, seventy-three reported accidents. I'm pleased to report that through the diligent, exceptional efforts by an investigation division, felony charges were approved for two significant criminal investigations during May. Case number one, a domestic-related incident at 16940 South Austin that some may know as the Motel Six. On May 2nd, 2025, at approximately 12:24 a.m., the Harvey Police Department investigators and officers responded to a domestic-related complaint at the Motel Six located at that address. Upon arrival, employee alerted officers to a male physically assaulting a naked female. Officers proceeded to the room where they overheard a female pleading for the male suspect to cease the assault and release her. After the occupants refused to open the door, the officers forced entry. Inside, they observed a naked female curled in a fetal position on the floor while naked, while a naked male suspect stood over her. The male suspect was immediately taken into custody. The female victim was transported to Engels Hospital for treatment of her injuries. During the subsequent investigation, it was determined that the male suspect had forcibly dragged the female victim back to the motel room from the hallway after she had initially attempted to escape. The male, the victim sustained a swollen eye, itching, visible blood in her mouth, and multiple lacerations to her face. Detective Mohammed formally charged Mark Swanigan, a male born December 29th, 1994, from Chicago with the following offenses: attempted murder, kidnapping, aggravated domestic battery, and unlawful restraint. All charges were reviewed and approved by the Cook County State's Attorney's Office. Case number two, aggravated domestic battery at 16629 East One Avenue. On May 24th, 2025, at approximately 4:26 a.m., Detective McGaughn was called to investigate an aggravated domestic battery incident at that location. Upon arrival, officers located Sylvan Martinez inside the residence with several stab wounds to his upper body. His girlfriend, and initial suspect, was located outside the residence. Mr. Martinez informed officers that he was stabbed following a dispute, and she was taken into custody. Following an extensive investigation, it was determined that the victim acted, I'm sorry, the offender acted in self-defense during the incident. It stated that Mr. Martinez began strangling her after she refused to engage in sexual intercourse with him. Detectives also discovered that the victim had previously filed a domestic battery report against Mr. Martinez in 2024. The Assistant State's Attorney's Office reviewed the case and approved one count of aggravated domestic battery. The Harvey Police Department remains steadfast in its dedication to enhancing the public safety and the quality of life for our residents. We deeply value your continued support as we work to move this city forward. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. The Harvey Fire Department reports for May. Uh, our department responded to 153 calls, sixteen calls fire-related, forty-two calls EMS, twenty-two calls for attention, eighteen calls for active conditions, twenty-five calls for false alarm, and nine calls for service calls. Uh, we urge our residents to go on Smart 911, create a medical profile. So when you have a medical emergency, when you dial 911, that information will be available for our dispatchers. So thank you. That's my report.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and residents here. My name is Caesar Suarez. I'm the Economic Development Director for the city here. And my main responsibilities is business development, planning and zoning, and also property sales. We have a lot of property here, and we also do a lot of that work here for planning and zoning. On the business development side, uh, the city, uh, staff and council members went to the ICSC conference, uh, on May 18th and 20th, and we had a multitude of potential prospects that are interested in the city. Uh, we're following up on Starbucks, Sonic, Steak 'n Shake, Choice Hotels, Cradoval, Planet Fitness, and the rest. And mainly the key areas would be in the northeast and the southwest corners, near the interstate. That's where the main industry stock lies with attracting industry and retail. Uh, we also currently have about eight Class Eight property tax applications. So we're gonna review them, and be coming before council in the coming months. With regard to planning and zoning, uh, at the end of 2025, we'll receive fifty-eight zoning applications, clearances, uh, year-to-date. Uh, for most of you know, before you can really locate in the city, you have to have zoning clearances, and so it takes time to really get through that process. And we have far more than we ever had before. So that's, uh, out of the fifty-eight that we have, thirty-three have been processed, uh, with thirty-two approved, one denied. And then we have twenty-five remaining right now, and many more are coming along the way. Uh, we have received a special use permit, uh, for an area, and we're expecting to have that, uh, meeting as well with the Planning and Zoning Commission. With regard to property sales, um, we're re-tracking properties. And we also include both city properties and also other private properties that may be eligible for a judicial deed or a tax deed. So there's very opportunities out there to really convert and redevelop vacant lots, vacant properties by identifying the property and submitting a letter of intent. You can do so, uh, online right now. Uh, thus far, we have interest and activity on 182 properties. Uh, they include, 104 have requested for potential sale. Uh, 31 have been approved for redevelopment. Twenty-eight are being purchased by MWRD for the transfer to the city. Nine properties have been sold. Seven are gonna be returned to the city. Uh, we have denials of two, and one property we are leasing. So most recently, on April 28th, 2025, the city council approved the sale of 60 East 155th Street to two, uh, Bluecrest Estates, a single-family home. And there's gonna be an investment of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to renovate that vacant home. So we're excited about that. So we continue to prepare the commercial industrial properties for sale. Uh, we own ten commercial properties, eight industrial properties, and we continually present them to interested parties. That is my report.
Good evening. We're back to the officials. Since my name is Louis Williams, I'm performing for the city of Harvey. Uh, my department continues to work efficiently, diligently, most importantly, quietly to manage the city's finances in terms of making sure we're recording revenue properly and expenditures. We also working very hard to live within the, to work within the limited means of the city. We talked about the real estate tax collections, I think about fifty-five, some of us actually bill, which does cost a tremendous cash crunch on the city's behalf. Also, we're paying pensions, exorbitant pensions, to make up for pensions that really had not been properly funded, not just over the last ten years, not just the last twenty years, probably closer to the last thirty-five. Continuing to work the limited resources we have, that they vendors is properly, is what they're trying to do. Continue to work the limited resources we have, that pay vendors is properly and is what we're trying to achieve.
Good evening, everyone. Kristen Richards, Southport Public Works Department. Since the onset of the spring season, the Public Works Department has taken task, to task some of the major issues faced by the city. This has not been an easy feat. As Mr. Seppit discussed in the previous meetings, one of our strategic priorities is ensuring that all city employees receive the necessary training to excel in their current roles and to grow into future opportunities. Over the past several weeks, we've made meaningful progress by hosting our first Chainsaw Safety inauguration training in conjunction with IDOT. We had an excellent turnout of about nineteen attendees, including participants from several neighborhood villages. This collaborative training strengthened individual safety practices, improved regional emergency preparedness, and promoted physical cooperation, all which are key components of building a more skilled and resilient workforce. As part of our ongoing initiative to identify and document water service line materials, we continue to work with our residents. So far, we have surveyed and completed ninety-one in-home inspections. However, we still have a long way to go. As mentioned in council meetings prior, our pumping station team continues to provide efficient and timely service to meet the city's operational needs. Over the past two weeks, they have completed three hundred and thirty-two work orders, which include but not limited to meter reads, exchanges, turn-ons, shut-offs, and locates. As far as our streets division, they continue to operate under a war-by-war strategy focused on infrastructure upgrades and neighborhood beautification. Despite various challenges, the team has shown a strong coordination and consistent progress. They installed fencing and barricades around two vacant lots at one hundred and sixty-six and Finch. They filled over fifty potholes citywide, cleared over two hundred vacant lots, cleared and cut, I'm sorry, over two hundred vacant lots and properties, and boarded up ten abandoned homes. On May sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five, the Public Works Department, in collaboration with the Harvey Police Department and Building Department, conducted a major team cleanup on one hundred and fifty-first Street and Lexington. The initiative was in response to residents' concerns regarding small children entering a questionable abandoned property. To enhance safety and restore the area, the team worked together to remove debris, boarded up four abandoned homes, install security cameras to monitor the daily activity. This project demonstrated our commitment to quick, effective responses to resident concerns and improvement, improving public safety. A citywide survey of our street signs has been completed. As a result, so far, seventy new, seventy new signs have been installed, including stop signs and other traffic signs. We pre-made and scheduled installation throughout, to continue throughout the season. These efforts aim to enhance traffic visibility and promote safer roadways throughout the city. Thank you for all your continued dedication and teamwork, let's stay focused and keep building a better herd.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council, and fellow residents. I'm pleased to provide this monthly report on behalf of the Building and Inspection Services Department. Our team has remained active and efficient, ensuring that permits, inspections, and business licenses are handled with diligence and timeless tidiness, especially as we enter our peak season for rehabilitation and maintenance work. In the month of May, our department approved a total of ninety permits, making a strong start to our busiest season because of the favorable weather conditions. These permits include, these permits include twenty roof permits, ten solar permits, along with ten rehab permits. Additionally, we approved the demolition of two residential properties due to structural concerns and safety issues. One forty-eight thirty-five Vale Avenue and one fifty-two twenty-two Loomis Avenue. These actions are part of our ongoing commitment to improve public safety. We are proud to report that two hundred and eleven business licenses were approved and made, a sign of continued economy and creating opportunities for residents. Before I close, I want to take a moment to acknowledge something just as important as permits and inspections, how we treat each other as neighbors. Our work brings us into neighborhoods across the city. We sometimes see tension arise between neighbors over property lines, maintenance issues, and misunderstandings. While our department will always do a departmental force code to mediate where necessary, many of these issues can be resolved through simple conversation and a bit of patience. Let's remember that this is our community. The success of Harvey depends not just on city services or officials, but on each of us making the effort to communicate, cooperate, and show mutual respect. Together, we can continue to build not just better homes and businesses, but a stronger, more unified city. This concludes my report.
Good evening, I'm Lexia Hall, Director of Communications for the city. Our department is continuing to focus on communication and engagement. Last month, we hosted our second Community Solutions Meeting of the Year, where representatives from Cook County Animal Control and the Animal Cruelty Society were on hand for a discussion on animal control in the city. So a big thank you to all who joined us. As many of you know, the city produces a monthly newsletter which is called the Harvey Calls. Thank you all for sharing your resounding positive feedback via a survey that we recently created. So far, we've had about fifty, we've had about, we've had about, had about fifty critiques, and the main critique is that the information doesn't come out on time. Getting the newsletter to the residents is an issue that we are working on as it concerns us as well. Just know that your comments have been heard, and we are looking at ways to get into you sooner. In the meantime, please remember that it is available on our website about three weeks sooner than it arrives in your mailbox, and is also available in a video format on our Facebook page and on our YouTube channel. If you haven't seen it yet, you can take a look and listen right now.
The volume seventeen of the Harvey Calls, your go-to source for all the latest news and happenings in the City Department. In the City Department, we believe residents deserve to know how decisions are made, how tax dollars are spent, and what's being done each day to move the city forward. That's why the city's focus on creating more opportunities for public engagement and more ways for residents to stay informed. That includes clearer communication and consistent updates on projects and city goals. Recent efforts include a newly designed city website, a monthly newsletter, and more timely updates across official social media platforms. Residents are encouraged to read the information provided on these channels. In that same spirit, the mayor has made a personal commitment to accessibility through weekly meeting and mayor sessions every Friday. This over-the-door time invites residents to bring their concerns, questions, or ideas directly to City Hall. Transparency builds trust, and trust is what can be needed. Planning clothes for property in Harvey? Don't forget to apply for real estate transfer stamp at least five business days before the closing day. Applications can be submitted in person at City Hall or online at City of Harvey email back up. All details and required forms are available on our website. All dogs and cats in the City of Harvey must be registered. Residents can stop by the clerk's office to complete registration to ensure pets are safe and accounted for. Last month, the Fire Department hosted a CPR training for senior residents. The training equips participants to act quickly in the event of a cardiac emergency where knowing CPR can increase survival rates by up to fifty percent. Those interested in getting classes can call seven oh eight three three one seven seven two zero to register. Residents are also encouraged to sign up at Smart nine-one-one. This free service allows you to create a safety profile with critical personal information such as medical history and emergency contacts. That information is instantly shared with dispatchers during a nine-one-one call, even if the caller is unable to speak. You can sign up at smartnineoneone.com. If you've interacted with the building department, we want to hear from you to better understand your experience and shape your future improvements. The survey link is included in the printed edition newsletter, informs throughout City Hall, and is available on the city's website. Thanks to community participation, this year's spring cleanup resulted in more than ninety-four times the waste collected. A cleaner Harvey is a shared success. Thank you, Public Works. We also held our second Community Solutions Meeting. This one focused on animal care and control. Join us at the next one to meet and impart the solution. To ensure that this newsletter remains helpful and relevant, a short survey is available. The survey takes just a few minutes and provides valuable insights to help improve future additions. Scan either through our goal or visit our website to take part. For frequent train traffic throughout the city, residents are reminded to review railroad safety tips from the Illinois Operation Life Sale included in this issue. Whether driving a walkie, stay alert, and stay safe near rail crossings. Public comment is a vital part of each city council meeting. It's the time when residents are invited to speak directly to their local government. If you want to participate, sign up at the welcome table before the meeting begins. Sneakers begin after three minutes. This is for communities' time to raise concerns, share feedback, and offer suggestions. Public participation helps shape the future Harvey, and every voice matters. A dozen single-de mile celebrations held with food, fun, and live entertainment. Thanks to the City Clerk's Office for organizing the event. Well, that's all for this issue of the Harvey Calls. Join us next month for more updates. Take care.
Well, thank you. That concludes my report.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Maria. I am the manager for the Water Department. The following is an overview of recent water department activities, billing statistics, and revenue collections for the current reporting period. Our department completed a total of two hundred and twenty-one work orders, which included high bill complaints, new residents' water turn-ons and shut-offs, visual meter readings, and residential deep checks. To date, we have successfully installed two, two thousand three hundred and forty-eight smart meters throughout the community. A total of five thousand eight hundred and forty-seven water bills were issued this building cycle with one thousand six hundred and thirty-six accounts enrolled in paperless deep well. We currently have five million seven hundred and eleven, six hundred and twenty-six dollars and twenty-eight cents in outstanding water balances. During this period, we collected a hundred and fifty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-one and twenty-seven cents towards outstanding accounts. We remain committed to improving service delivery, expanding smart meter implementation, and strengthening our effort to recover past due balances. Thank you for your continued support as we work to provide efficient and reliable water service to our residents. That concludes my report.
Good evening, I'm the Director of Human Resources. The Human Resource Department is working on making our interview process better. A positive experience can increase the likelihood of job offers by sixty-six percent. The Human Resource Department thrives on efficiency, clarity, and communication. And the sharing of company culture to build trust, our goal is to increase that percentage to one hundred percent. We're also striving to create policies and procedures. With that understanding, by making policy changes, it will reform the foundation of local govern, governance, ensuring consistent decision-making, transparent operations, and accountability. Policies and procedures help hold employees accountable for their actions and ensure that municipality is operating in a transparent and ethical manner. The Human Resource Department is also updating job descriptions and titles. It's crucial for reflecting organizational changes and ensuring clarity for the roles and responsibility in which it provides performance. Clear descriptions allow for more effective performance evaluations and feedback. More accurate descriptions attract the right candidate and save time on resources in the hiring process. We are identifying training opportunities to equip employees with necessary skills and knowledge to enhance the overall success of our organization. The Human Resource Department continues to implement strategies to reduce employee turnover, such as creating a positive work environment, offering competitive benefits, and providing opportunity for career growth. Also, the HR department does regular check-ins with managers and employees to provide ongoing feedback and develop opportunities as a part of comprehensive growth and strategy. This open communication allows employees to stay on track, address any challenges, and receive recognition for their achievements. We will continue to provide continual learning opportunities, trainings, workshops, coaching, and mentor programs to enhance leadership skills. Within the next sixty days, our leadership workshop will be taking place for all directors, chiefs, and managers. This helps leaders to stay productive on top market developments. Companies are more than five times more likely to have a successful transformation when leaders have role modeled the behavior changes that they're asking their own employees. I feel if you strengthen leadership, it builds capacity for strength and growth. This concludes my report.
To the Mayor, to the City Council, to the administration, and to the wonderful people of the City of Harvey. My name is Joseph Whitney Jr. I'm the Director of Senior Services. Today, I prepared a brief report concerning the senior services department's accomplishments for this month. We had one seniors with an attitude of gratitude gathering in April with a small group of seniors, but the weather was bad for them, it was thirty-two of them, but they didn't come out even in the rain. We had thirteen line dancing groups throughout the week with a group of a hundred and seventy-seven people participating. We're finding out as the senior services that wellness is what they want to do. They want to do something that's exercising and fun. We attended one single-de-mile celebration, and it was a large turnout. Over seventy people attended this room here. We attended, me, when I said we, I said me and my staff. We attended School District one fifty-two Grandparents' Day Celebration Brooks Middle School, sharing information about the city and what we're doing for seniors. We attended one South Suburban College Strategy Planning Community Forum representing the City of Harvey, sharing what seniors need in education and in this area of, for seniors. We hosted one Cook County Clerk Monitor Guard's Property After Death Forum at the City Hall here, where a large group turned out to realize that, that over eighty percent of seniors do not have wills, have not even planned, even thought about making one. We attended one Justice Jackson Senior Service Building for teaching people to deal with fire extinguishers workshops. We planted flowers with volunteers, there are a group of volunteers, seniors that would like to beautify the city, and we are constantly encouraging seniors that would like to work with us to beautify the city with flowers. We answered sixty-nine incoming calls, served forty-nine requests, completed twenty-five requests, returned thirty-eight calls. Emails, six emails, had five walk-ins. In closing, we had some updates, activities for seniors for June. We have two line dancing events for Tuesdays, the tenth and the seventeenth at ten o'clock, eleven o'clock, ten to eleven here at City Hall. One bingo launching for June twelfth, at twelve to three. We have one Juneteenth celebration, June eighteenth, from twelve to three. That is my report. Thank you very much. That is my report. Thank you very much.
Good evening, mayor, members of city council, and residents. My name is Charles Moore. I'm the city collector for the department of revenue. I'm pleased to revise the monthly reports on behalf of the revenue department. I teamed up with the water department, the builder department, and produce a more efficient and portable way to receive transfer stamps on our online process. In the month of May, I approved a total of eighty-eight transfer stamps with thirty-two pending documentation, proving our online payment process is successful. Additionally, we collected numerous past due water bills, being the highest one of twelve thousand six hundred eighteen dollars that goes back to twenty-twenty. We have also recovered numerous fines, city building violations, the largest being seventy-five hundred dollars. The revenue department will continue to look into past due fines, fees, past due taxes, and collect and reduce the city's deficits. I have the pleasure of being old business owners, new business owners, as well as longtime Harvey residents who care about the future of Harvey. It is a new direction. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Before we go into, this was actually the last, the court was revenue department, so I was waiting until that time to inform everyone that the treasurer has placed on the desk a copy of a report, which we are going to submit to the comptroller's office for verification, and then to the finance department, not finance department, finance committee. And it should be on the agenda for, I think it is?
Yes.
The twenty-third, meeting for the twenty-third, so it should be on that agenda at that particular point in time once everything has been verified. And we are very appreciative to receive the report. Now, I'm gonna try to be brief. First, just to make sure, especially those that are watching, public comment is just that it is public comment, it's public opinion. It does not necessarily mean that what the commenters are saying is true. It just means that they have a right under the First Amendment to express themselves and their opinion regarding certain matters. So, we want to make sure that everyone understands that, and we do respect those opinions as well. But once again, those opinions have not been verified either. We have, there was one specific comment talking about ways that we can get in touch with the community and let the community know certain things. It was mentioning other ethnic groups as well, ethnicities. First of all, if you are interested in your water bill and you are a resident of Harvey who pays a water bill, there is an insert that comes in your water bill every month that gives you an indication of what is going on, tells you what took place in the council meetings. So you can read that insert so that you can find out exactly what's happening in the council meetings, because we want people to be informed. Also, as our communications department also stated, we have the Harvey newsletter. That letter is both in print and online. So you can also access the newsletter that way to find out more information about the city. In addition, there are also, and we are having, I don't have the date for the next one, but our community solutions meetings. And community solutions meetings are another opportunity for us to come together to talk and discuss some of the issues that we have and try to figure out solutions. I want to thank Cook County Apple Control, also the Apple Welfare League, and Lord Illy from Bugs Ambulance for coming out and speaking with us about those particular issues, because it is extremely important. When he was talking about things that we had as far as ethnicities, actually, this is other ethnicities, this is everyone. We have the mayor's conference, a three-on-three soccer event that will take place this month, on June twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. There's a three-on-three soccer event for seven divisions. Yeah, seven divisions. You can go online to find the information, to sign up if you'd like to participate. The first prize is, I think, a thousand dollars. Do we have a second five hundred this time? And the second prize is five hundred dollars. So, it's one of the things that we sponsor so that our youth can have something to do during the summer. I'm trying to strike out some of the things that are in the address on these. Oh, so here it is. We would hope, I've gotten quite a few calls from our senior population. And with everything that's going on and the benefit of this reality, I would hope that we can take it down a notch, because they're extremely concerned, and they're more so concerned about their own personal safety. I am going to just leave it at that, because if I say anything else, it'll seem like I'm pointing fingers at one side or the other. I would just hope that we could bring that down. And so I want to address some of the other issues that could be addressed for that particular reason. But I do want to reiterate what our third work order said as far as the businesses are paying property taxes. Property taxes are the seeds of Harvey's business, because a portion of those taxes come to the city, not just to the city of Harvey, but they also come to the library district, the school district, the park district, and many other districts. Harvey has fifteen taxing bodies. Now, that doesn't mean Harvey taxes you, but we have fifteen taxing bodies from there. So also, whether college, township, for rescue or abatement, there's a variety of taxes that are in those property taxes. And when those businesses do not pay their property taxes, then it puts an extra burden on those other taxing bodies to figure out how to serve you without any money, plain and simple. So we need those businesses to pay, and we would like your support in letting those businesses know that they should pay their property taxes, because we get a portion of that. All right, so, here comes the building. First of all, I'll say happy Pride Month. This is Julian. It's Pride Month. And seeing that we have some of this from the LGBTQ plus community here, I want to make sure that I get it clear that while I'm accused of calling someone a pedophile, I never mentioned that person's sexuality, namely that I called him a pedophile. He equivocates being a pedophile with being gay, because that is not something that I said, and it's not something that I believe in any shape, form, or fashion. Harvey is and Harvey has been a safe space for everyone who is a part of the community. And I stand with that community, and will continue to stand with that community. Have always still with the community in more ways than you can imagine. And it just so happens that the person who's made a complaint about me, I represented that person as a lawyer for free. So if I had a problem with people being in the community, I think probably the first thing I wouldn't have done was represented someone for free. But I did. Now, it really insults, because once again, and this is part of what you get for being in the seat when the accusations come. But members of my family are also part of the community. And with members of my family and saying, wait a minute, you did it, what? You know, of course, they know it's not true, but the simple fact is, is that it makes them feel a certain way, and it makes them feel a certain way because it's being equivocated that being gay means being a pedophile. And that is not what that means. Now, in today's time where people in the community are under attack, you need as many people on your side as possible. You definitely do. And Harvey is, unfortunately for the rest of the world, we may have gone crazy on some things, I will admit. But some things we are steady on, and we have always been steady on our diversity. That's why we have so many different races and ethnicities and religions in this city. We have so many people of diverse backgrounds and sexual realities in this city. And unlike Chicago, where it becomes some of the most segregated, that has never really been the Harvey problem. Harvey has actually been that place where people who could not find the equality that they needed in other places, they came to Harvey. And black people came to Harvey as well, because they couldn't find that equality in other places. So Harvey has always been that. We will always support that. And we will always support the gay community. So hopefully, that will put that to rest, and probably won't, because some people feel like they have, you know, just political motives, and they're using the community in order to move that agenda forward. But it has no place here, absolutely no place. And I say that because if there's anybody who watches this in the future, you can understand, uh-uh, not yet. Now, that being said, happy Father's Day. Because that is coming up, and happy Father's Day to all the fathers. I'm a dad. I'm a girl dad, and I'm proud to be a girl dad. Love it. Absolutely most wonderful thing. Some people ask me, should I have boys? I don't know. God didn't set it up that way, but he sure blessed me when he gave me them girls. So, that's all I got to say on that. And then to all the other fathers, I hope you feel the same way for whether you have girls or boys. You know what? And let me go back, y'all just brought me something else that I want to speak on. Because with that LGBTQ E-plus issue, there's trans in there too. And there are some people who have those issues, and they have to deal with those issues, and they continually get attacked as well. Okay, I didn't have to bring this up, so, I mean, this is right off the top. But the bottom line is, as I was thinking about sons and daughters, I just started thinking about those family members who have children, who are trans. And they have to go through, the things that they have to go through, because society doesn't necessarily want to understand or recognize those children. So, I'm gonna try to leave that at that unless something else comes up. Happy Juneteenth, because the next time we see you, Juneteenth will have passed. And for those black people, Juneteenth is extremely important. I'm glad to see that it is now a national holiday. I hope that we can, once again, party and party in peace, and we can celebrate what it truly means. Because that freedom that was finally announced to those people who were in Texas as far as they're being free, as lazy as it was, I wouldn't, yes, of course, because I'm pretty sure they wasn't complaining when they got it. And they were happy enough. And finally, black people specifically were in a position where we will all declare free. Y'all know freedom ain't always free. But, you know, it's one step at a time, and we are building a perfect union. So, last but not least, I'm gonna do what I always do when things like this happen, and I hope that all of you do the same thing. First of all, I went to church the other week. And, you know, I can't get no peace, because somebody took pictures of me in church. And I had to contact my pastor and ask my pastor about that. He took pictures in front of Facebook. And that's okay, because maybe some other people will get saved as a result. You know, so that's how, you know. Hey, maybe they will. Maybe everybody looking to make, if you go to church, some people go to church too. You know, but even if you don't go to church, remember now, you need to have a relationship. You say, say the five, five, that times, and have a relationship with God. Okay? But, yeah, that goes to me too, for those coming in the morning. It goes to me too. It goes for all of us. And so on that note, I am going to leave it exactly there. And I'm gonna end up my time with a scripture.
Separation of church and state, man.
I'm going to end my time with a scripture. Be merciful to me, oh God, be merciful, because I come to you for saving. In the shadow of your wings, I find protection until the raging storms are over. I call to God, the Most High, to God who supplies my every need. He will answer from heaven and save me. He will defeat my presence. God will show me his constant love and faithfulness. I am surrounded by animals who are like lions, hungry for human flesh. Their teeth are like spears and arrows. Their tongues are like sharp swords. Show your greatness in the sky, oh God, and your glory over all the earth. On that note, that is Psalm fifty-seven, verses one through five. And on that note, now you see, there he is right. You just can't get through. You just can't get through. But that's okay, because God will take care of him too. Amen?
Amen.
Amen. All right, then, there we go. He gonna handle that too. But, if there is nothing else for the moon of the Lord, the chair will entertain motion to adjourn. Motion by the first and second by the sixth, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Those are polling. There is none. God bless you all, and have a great week.